Hey, Mike, I'm still not getting any sound on my end.
Sorry about that, I was muted.
Okay, there it goes.
Um, so. This is uh the proposed regulation um to replace the current language in the reg section seven point oh seven point oh five. Which is currently titled Separate Family Quarters. The state passed a a law in twenty twenty one which indicated that towns had to do a number of things pertaining to accessory dwelling units. And uh they had to follow those requirements unless they opted out. We chose to opt out here after after kind of thinking about some of the issues that may come up and particularly with relation to UConn, but also there was some concern when we talked to Howard Sage, well, if we don't opt out and then the statute is subsequently changed, you can't retroactively opt out, so it's better to do it. Which is why we we made that decision. Um, so these regulations are you know, reflective, reflect multiple revisions. We reviewed a bunch of towns um to kind of get to this point. Um, and the draft that you reviewed probably about six weeks ago at this point, um, not much of this has changed. There was some wording that we had to tweak um to clarify that the accessory dwelling unit shall include one bedroom, which we if we fixed um some language on the second page again, just to make sure. And then the commission had some discussion about um whether or not there should be a separate outside entrance, whether it should be visible from the street, should not be visible from the street. So this draft reflects those updates. We also um are going to require that one of the units, whether it be the accessory dwelling unit or the house, main house um being owner occupied, and we are matching um the language that Mansfield has regarding deed restriction. So this will require that the property owner file a deed restriction to make it clear that they need to remain on the property. It's been from what I have been told and what I've talked to staff, it's been successful in Mansfield. They haven't had issues with it. Um, so so we're mirroring that language. I have a sample of the deed restriction that they use. It's really complicated, so we're gonna boil it down a little bit, but um we're gonna use that as the baseline um for when these things come forward.
Any any comments or questions from the commission? So our options are basically, you know, we go forward with this or we vote it down.
Right, if you vote it down, then what on the third page is what remains in effect.
Um, item D, is that requiring a separate outside entrance for all accessory dwelling units?
Yes.
Okay.
No tiny house. One place, please, tiny house that have wheels.
Well.
I'm I'm just asking.
Tiny house on wheels is different because it's on wheels. Someone could have a tiny house.
But they can't use it as an accessory dwelling unit as of this because no unit they can't keep. I'm just I'm just verifying in my own head that that's.
Yeah, it's a bit of a rabbit hole because the way tiny houses are constructed, they don't really qualify as a mobile home. Um, but yeah, uh that they would not be located in a tiny house wheels. Because I I think it follows on some of these have a travel trailer.
Yeah, or a structure on wheels.
Yeah.
What about tree houses? Nothing on tree houses, right?
I mean, if they could qualify, uh would meet all the criteria. Still have to be, still ask the qual, you know, the public health code requirements and building code requirements.
Right, right.
Is there any concern about a minimum square footage? Meaning including a minimum? Um, well, I know we we uh specify what they cannot exceed. And when the back mentioned um tiny houses, I didn't know how small could be allowed to be. So the other, the another the another piece to PA twenty one twenty nine, if we can't opt out of says, we can't tell people how big it has to be. We can tell them it can't get bigger than a certain size. They still have to meet public health and building code, but if they can meet those criteria. You know, requiring a minimum size of five hundred feet, five hundred square feet, we can't do that.
But it's got to have a kitchen, it's got to have a refrigerator, stove or stove top. Cabinets. Counter space, a bathroom.
Yeah, and that language you'll see. Yeah, it it Mansfield has something similar, Tolland has something similar. The intent here is that it's a bona fide living unit, not just take a tiny space and turn it into something and you can rent out to somebody. We it should be a livable unit that that a person or or a single parent with a child can live in and is livable.
So what is it saying here? It can't be a mobile home.
Uh, second page.
Second page.
Mobile, yeah, mobile, anything that was on wheels or designed for movement, I actually pretty much know.
I think I'm good with this.
And this be made out of a shipping container or something, if they so desired.
I I had we have been asked all kinds of questions about shipping containers from very, you know, I've gotten all kinds of calls, and I've yet to see anybody that can actually make that meet the building code. For for insulation, you know, heat um plumbing. Because it needs to have all our values in the walls and they I'm not seeing anybody be able to actually make that.
We want that in here.
Well, it would be a structure, but I don't know how we would define it. Must be padded.
Mike, Mike, they actually make refrigerator um shipping containers which are insulated. Um, I I know of a company that's building um LED uh vertical uh gardening uh rigs in um refrigerated shipping containers, so they're already insulated. Um, but you're, you know, running electricity to them, um uh water, uh sewer, et cetera, or septic, et cetera, you know, yeah. It's prohibitive to try and do things that way, might as well just build a structure.
Like I think that I think the term, technical term is intermodal container.
I think we should put that in here.
So you want to have that.
Yeah, probably, yeah, probably, yes, yeah.
Well, that's designed to have wheels on it. So in theory.
Just picked up by a crane and loaded onto a a train.
The dolly has wheels with a container.
You know, somebody will try to do it. Take the wheels off your mobile, you're good. Take the axles off and set it on the ground.
Yeah, I don't know if you could get a certificate of occupancy. For them. You don't think you could get a certificate of occupancy for an RV, even if you took the wheels off.
I'm talking about a regular mobile home.
Oh, like a travel trailer?
No, like a mobile home where you see the trailer park pull the axles and wheels off.
Yeah. That they could do. But we can't prevent that because the state has said we can't, actually HUD has said we can't. But that we don't see those as much because they're expensive to buy and then they depreciate really quickly. So like a regular house, you buy.
And they're big, yeah, they have little.
Yeah, they're expensive to manage, but then you buy it and it's worth less and you have to maintain it. And so they just don't, it doesn't work. You can't get mortgages for them. They don't see that pressure as much for that reason. But uh so we'll add intermodal freight container to the to the end of H. If that's what you think makes sense.
As far as I think it makes sense, I I.
Can't hurt, I mean, just prevent somebody from going down that path. Going down that path, hitting a screen.
Ralph Tullis is waiting to get in. Sorry, I looked at it, I shouldn't.
Anybody see any any blue balls here that?
We don't have to do anything, it remains a quick help add-on to this.
This is the graph. I thought we were discussing the public hearing that we're gonna try to do things later, can't. Questions or comments, we're finishing the break, open it up to the public. Okay, well, our public's online tonight, so anyone from the public uh want to comment on the on this? Going, going, okay. All right, no, no public comment on this. Yeah. Don't make a motion because I can do it.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing for
twenty three ten.
Twenty, no, yeah, twenty.
Yeah.
No, no. That we close the public hearing for PZ twenty three dash ten, proposed zoning regulation amendment section seven point oh seven point oh five pertaining to accessory dwelling units. Application uh Wilmington Planning and Zoning Commission.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, public hearing is closed, that's PZ twenty three ten. Thank you. All right, which brings us to item number two, PZ ten twenty three dash eleven, proposed zoning regulation amendment to section seven point one oh pertaining to seasonal outdoor dining applicant Wilmington Planning and Zoning Commission.
So this is another amendment prompted by uh legislation at the state level. So during COVID, there was an emergency executive order which which allowed restaurants and food service establishments to have the outdoor dining. And and staff was obligated to issue those permits or determine why they would deny it in ten days. Um, so there was language that was passed after the executive orders expired, which requires towns to um allow temporary and seasonal outdoor dining as a right associated with a food service establishment. Um, can't opt out of this one. It doesn't allow for anything else, so they don't, they don't also get approval for to extend their liquor service outside. That requires liquor control approval. They don't have uh the authority through this to expand and provide uh live entertainment outside or otherwise expand their use in any other way. Um, this this just allows for essentially all the obligations that we were under during COVID to be permanent. And so uh this, we've done some revisions to this as well. Um, particularly relating to the number of tables and how we get to the capacity and parking lot layouts. And requires them to go through all the same procedures and process that we have now. But but this pretty much aligns with with what we're required to allow. It doesn't allow anything really beyond that. And then we did include at the bottom um the caveat that I explained about live entertainment. Um, so this is something that would not require this is an accessory use, so they can't just, any business can't say, okay, we're gonna have an outdoor patio and we're gonna serve food. It's got to be accessory to a lawfully existing restaurant or food service establishment. They require a zoning permit from staff, so it it um the by right um basically means you can't bring them in here and have a public hearing or firing a special permit, et cetera. So during sort of previous revisions, we talked about the number of tables and seats and that ratio, the parking lot layout, how that was written. Um, we also talked previously and the commission adjusted what's shown in two C regarding hours of operation in that that later date for the the time. Everything else has been pretty consistent.
Any questions or comments from the commission? I still recall our document the last time, so.
The only question they had is, should any of these restaurant or food service places demonstrate that there's some sort of protection between parking and the actual seating?
So they are, yeah, so that is all part of the fire marshal review.
Gotcha, okay.
They, so that, yeah.
Cause we, so somebody went in, had too much to drink, and they put the car in reverse and they don't go in.
Oh, yeah.
Car in the end of the.
And originally, I forget which which one it was, had some problems because everybody needed these, you know, mafia blocks and Jersey barriers and no one could get them.
Right.
Um, so yeah, they are gonna be required. I think the building official will do some of that as well, the fire marshal. So it's usually covered.
Okay, so they look at that.
Yes, yeah, a hundred percent.
Okay.
If you want to clarify and add it, I'm happy to. We can, we can certainly add that into number one.
That's not a bad thing to have on there, that there should be some sort of barrier. That that's a good point.
I mean, I think I know when uh Will pizza first started, I mean, they uh they had something because their parking lot comes right in and it was right there, so they at least tried to put some heavy structures in front. Protect somewhat, you know.
Well, it's rare, but every once in a while you read about somebody driving into a building, whatever, they'll, all right, they're right here, do something, so.
All right, so.
Going at it, yeah.
So, no, did we, I I moved the crates because we had a water leak in the office and I forgot. Can you get them out? So we we can add it as a new number one E. And
Some form of protective barrier between customers and or the parking.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm toying with is just asking them to show the location of protected barriers or I don't know that we want to go so far as to say they have to provide protective barriers because I, that's.
You may not need it depending on where it's located.
Right.
So you don't want to say you have, you want to show where it is.
So, okay.
Or demonstrate a division, something. Add a security.
If needed.
Still have the planters where they're raising their birds and some of their vegetables in the parking lot and their dining areas.
They're also gonna decorate it to somewhere. I consider that a little different. We put a bunch of tables in the parking lot.
Oh, yeah, I feel great, right? Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that one, New York City, that's common, I am right in the edit.
Yeah. I have one, when an outdoor dining area is proposed adjacent to a parking lot or driveway. They think then that.
Okay.
That makes it clear that if there's gonna be potential interaction.
Yes.
The location of Location of an appropriate area to ensure separation between vehicles and pedestrians.
Or diners, whatever you want to call it.
Patrons. So it would say when an outdoor dining area is proposed adjacent to a parking lot or driveway, the location of an appropriate barrier. Or I'll say appropriate barriers to ensure separation between vehicles and patrons.
And then we take, direct it to the fire marshal, the building officials say, no, we can't, can't afford to just
Or do you want to ensure that safe separation between
We, we're doing the fire marshal, the building official can determine if it's safe.
They're still gonna do those, but at least it requires that they'll put it on the plan, at least it brings it up again.
Okay.
Our operation till eleven PM, are we gonna put any restriction on environment containment?
In the last.
Yeah. What if a police already has?
They would be subject to whatever the special permit that they have for it says. So they would, so whatever restrictions were imposed by the commission when that is or was would supersede this, so just before the timing.
As we actually extended it the last time, I'm saying a little bit restrictive, like the United Chaser.
Was it not increases?
Yeah, that's that's a little too much. Any more people be able to finish out, you know, eating and so forth, and they shouldn't get like a yeah, rushed out experience, as you said. Yeah. All right, any any further comments or question? All right, I'm gonna open this one up to public uh comment, anyone from the public uh canvas. Mr. Tullis.
Ralph Tullis, forty seven Village Hill Road. Uh, I I don't have any objections to anything in this section. I think it's appropriate and I support it, so. Uh, I apologize for jumping on late, so I missed the the bulk of the first item on your agenda, so. That's all.
All right, thank you, Ralph. Anyone else in the public uh have anything? Okay, he doesn't appear though, so. Someone want to make a motion? Go ahead.
I move we close PZ twenty three dash eleven, proposed zoning regulation amendment to section seven point one zero pertaining to seasonal outdoor dining applicant Wilmington Planning and Zoning Commission.
Oh, second.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John. Public hearing is uh is closed. Which brings us to uh item E, new business. PZ dash twenty three dash ten, proposed zoning regulation amendment to session seven point oh five, oh seven point oh five pertaining to accessory dwelling units applicant Wilmington Planning and Zoning Commission, decision possible but not required. So what's the thought? I personally think we could get this one done tonight, but.
Uh, I I think we can.
Doesn't need, if if we could get these two done tonight, they go in with the qualification to like.
Yes, you did.
There you go. That's better, right? All right. So I'll I'll make a motion that we take PZ that twenty three dash ten, proposed zoning regulation amendment to session seven point oh seven point oh five pertaining to accessory dwelling units applicant Wilmington Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm making a motion to approve it uh with the with the change that we made.
And if I could just add an effective date of uh November first, twenty twenty three.
Effective November first, twenty twenty three. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, John. All right, so that one is uh approved. Easy, which brings us to item number two, PZ dash twenty three dash eleven. Proposed zoning regulation amendment to section seven point one zero pertaining to seasonal outdoor dining, the applicant was the Wilmington Planning and Zoning Commission. And the decision again is possible without required, this is another one that we probably should add that tonight, this one, no brainer. Someone want to make a motion for this one?
I'll make the motion to approve PZ twenty three dash eleven.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, and uh this is with the change we made for the barrier.
Yep, so we're gonna have a new E.
When would this one be effective, like?
Eleven one, same thing.
And this one would be effective eleven one as well, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we have uh both of those approved. Which brings us to uh item F, unfinished business, affordable housing plan.
So we went through this a couple of meetings, we had a public hearing, we had it on the website. We um made some revisions and you discussed this at length. So at the last meeting, we went through, had a couple of tweaks, so this is just sort of a final layout, this takes the draft and and puts it as a final, so certainly if there's some minor, you know, revisions or whatever, we can still make them, but um this is sort of the the end product. There's nothing of different than what you were looking at before, just that that was just a tech-only version. Content is more or less the same. For a couple of I suppose that we fixed uh a couple of references that we updated. Um. Um. Today we had a public hearing if you want. They're kind of.
Yeah, keep it kind of a little mood up. Thing. If we adopt this, these action items, they actually go into the factor they. We try what? What goes on besides the state has that we didn't.
The only thing that adopting the plans, action items mean are that you are going to. Consider the things in there, you're not under any obligation to implement any of them. We don't know what it'll look like down the road as far as. What the state will actually say or ask, but in theory, if we have an action item list of ten items and we've not done any of them, we should at least know. That there's a reason why. And so it's not just, well, we decided not to, if we determine that none of them are a good fit, then that's fine. You're but but you're not. You're not backing yourselves into a corner to have to implement anything except because it's in that plan.
That that was my only.
And I guess the only other thing I would add is unlike a P O C D, you're not obligated to consider this document in any future decision. So with the P O C D, when you make its own change, it's got to be consistent with the P O C D. If someone comes in with an application for housing or multi gendered, they can't force you to do something and say, well, the housing plan says that, you're not.
If if it doesn't, if we don't agree with it, we cannot agree with it.
Right, you're not obligated to consider this. On a future application like you would with a P O C D.
This is basically the blueprint plan.
Yeah, I think it was. Hardly considered as sort of the first step to starting to have these conversations, because in a lot of towns. They're just not had at all.
That's kind of a long time coming. And we've been talking about this for only three years now. One of my major concerns initially is the A D U's and everything, we address that appropriate manner.
Yeah.
And yeah, the other thing is you're not, you can amend this at any time.
Okay.
You're not, this is, yeah, you. You can certainly do that.
I think the good thing about having this is at least it gives. The general population an opportunity to look and see what we've considered.
Yes, great. Great. And correct me if I'm I'm wrong, Mike, but we right now we have what, seven percent affordable housing area, you need a minimum.
And.
Seven in the chain.
Which is a lot more than.
That's right, too. Okay, so almost eight.
Yeah. I don't think, I think Bolton is under two percent.
Really? Yeah, okay.
We are a lot larger than your house. Yeah. All right. Not going to off the, prevent in that area. He doesn't. Interview.
Well, one of the things here too, that's new during the statewide, they wanted so every single base. Building. Based on soil. And having the soil mapping there. I mean, again, if it shows the public what. You know, and I think this is what it is, it's a big P R thing. It really is. Um, you know, it's like having the different options laid out, so people get offended of. What all these things mean, instead of just thinking about something, well, it's actually something about paper. Or, you know. Grab a hand if they want to spend the time, if they're truly interested in the product.
Still comes down, if you're gonna make it available, you gotta make money.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah. Well, with the affordable housing. I did some reading and. It's, you you have to build at least ten or twelve units at a time at on one site, knowing to make it feasible. If you you can't build under that, I mean, at this present time.
We, uh, in another town that I'm working in, they have, they're a connected fast track. And so they're working on a transit oriented development overlay and working on some of the language with them. Krag did it, that is done a bunch of studies on a number of different sort of transit nodes in the Hartford corridor. And they did an evaluation of construction costs. And they they basically came to the conclusion that if you were to build a development, because you, let's say you were a property owner and you wanted to build. A hundred unit development, or you were going to build it and and you wanted to sell it to an operator, you'd be losing a hundred dollars a square foot. Based upon construction costs, you're building at three hundred and something dollars a foot approximately, and this COVID has changed some of that, but but your your value. Is about a hundred bucks a foot less. It just doesn't work. Um, and that's. Adjacent to a transit stop, so like, there's a lot more value to the property, there's a lot more value in rents because they have access to jobs. And just massive population. And the analysis is, it doesn't work.
Building codes are just skyrocketing cost of. Anything now, you know, the energy codes and what now has to be implemented, there's been. And huge ticket items, and I can't imagine on a grander scale, multiple units, they all have to be conforming. It's just, it's crazy.
Yeah, I talked to a builder recently, they were thinking about twenty, twenty two or twenty five units, this is standard housing. Talking about prices of three hundred and twenty five to three hundred and sixty thousand. The profit on each one was ten grand.
That you weren't doing. Yeah, yeah. And that with access utilities, which we can't provide here. We don't have gas, we don't have water, so like all of those things, I remember. To build the apartments. Uh, on river, yeah, in the mainstream line, yeah.
And then quickly.
Then that.
Yeah, between wetlands and ledge, I just could not get any number of units seem to have any sense.
Well, they'd be running into that here too, because a lot of the prime thoughts have been built on already.
Yeah.
All right, well, any anyone have any question, further questions or comments on this? I know we've done a bunch of iterations and been talking about it a lot one time now, so. So what are we looking to do here? Mike, just take a, take a vote on it, okay? Make a motion that we adopt the affordable housing plan as as originally.
Oh, second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Here.
Yeah, I know. In the master.
Yeah. Here it goes.
All right. Item G, approval of minutes from our August fifteen, twenty twenty three meeting.
We make a motion, we approve the minutes of August fifteen, twenty twenty three.
I'll second that. Same, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And it's approved. Item H, correspondence, anything like.
No correspondence.
Okay, for this, the item I, public participation, and again, that's right, it's not listed on the agenda, so any, anyone from the public have any? Anything they want to say? Okay. Item J, staff report discussion. Uh, item one, commissioner training requirements plus training opportunities.
So I included. We should have a copy. Uh, um, some of the training. Um, stuff that was provided by Krag, so we talked about training requirements and think, and a bunch of it, you know, with this, the. Genetic bar training this past spring, so. The good news is.
Right, right, for now.
Yeah, and the good news is, once this first year gets clicked over, once you obtain your first, you you once you check the box for the first time. The obligation was lifted and you now only have to do it every four years, so. So whether you do an hour a year or you wait, but essentially that that bar training that happens every other year will always qualify. So you do that, you're good, but it. You get your first round in, meet the criteria, and then after that, it's once every four years or once every term, if the term is greater than four. So.
You have a six year term for commissioner.
So then you would have to do it once every term.
All right.
So it it does ease that up a little bit.
So, uh. Did everybody meet their training requirement? I believe so, right, on this commission?
I, I. Think so, I don't have all, I I know we got the letters in the office, but I'll look at it. There's so you can, I mean, any of those, if you haven't and you're still interested, you can go to.
Okay.
We can send you some virtual, there's some webinars, basically they're online that Alan Sage did, that you can watch. Um.
But I don't believe anybody right now is required, because I think we all.
If you did that, then you're good.
Yeah, okay.
I still remember calling the people who said no.
But it's very hard to.
So how many credits was that virtual training where we had this spring?
The the all day? The the one that was like a whole afternoon?
Yeah, it wasn't really all day.
It was. It was a lot. It 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 it's, I think it exceeds the four that you're required.
Really?
Um, and there were some stuff in there that. That doesn't, you don't need to worry about, there's like an England wetland piece and some other stuff, but if you attended that, you were good.
I attended.
Yeah, so we got, we have letters that they sent, they mailed to us.
All right. So we have the records, but if anybody did, and they know they did, I probably should consider. Good going.
And like I said, there's other stuff you don't want to do in person.
Four credits for that.
What's that?
So we made it up good, we got four credits for that. That seminar, because these are only one and a half.
Yeah, no, there's four on the second page, read the second page. There's there's longer class. I think the only virtual one is only one point five. All right. Anything else, Mike?
Uh, no, we. We got today all of our files back, our scans, all one hundred and five boxes, and we are, we'll be transmitting. All the updated code stuff to general code to get that started on October first. Um. So those two things are moving forward. We are scheduled to have the one hundred percent design meeting with Krag for the lots of project in October. We got finally got comments back from D O T, which were very minor, um, so that was good. Uh. I think that's probably.
Lots of things we said.
Lots of, the River Road sidewalk project from the school to the mill. Because this is a state road, we have to go through the D O T encroaching process.
It was just the acronym.
Yeah, that's the grant program that we are getting the funds through.
What's going on with the project with the solar panels and maybe the restaurant?
Uh, Ruby?
Yeah.
Um, so I talked with the site engineer. This week. Um, and they are. They are thinking at this point that they are likely. Uh, going to be coming back here. Because they need to do a modification to the footprint of the building, they do have a tenant. Um, which is, yeah, that's good, the, and then, so they they are pretty much. Ready to be all inked up on the solar side, chargers, that stuff has been pretty firm, the. The the question mark that they're just trying to make sure they really tease out is the construction cost, because if the construction costs. Wind up to not make sense. Construct a building, you're going to lose money on this because you have to, so like, they're trying to talk to contractors to make sure that. They know what those costs are going to be, so that when they sign with the tenant, they're not building a building, they're going to lose money on it. Um. So I I said, you know, please don't. Please don't walk away, if the numbers don't pencil out, you know, let let's, we'll sit down, we'll try to figure out. What, you know, if there's anything that the regs provide or something, don't don't just scrap the thing and go away. Um, and it's a commercial property on the corner of an on red, would you? If we have an opportunity to do development, that's one of the parcels, so. And and so far, I mean, the whole. The the requirement that they even put that building on the site comes from our regulations not allowing solar. So that that was not part of his plan at all, he's not a real estate developer, he's just do does solar stuff, so. Um, it's new territory for him. You know, just, you know, we'll try to work with them and, but they they expect that they'll probably have to come back. In the near future, just to tweak that arrangement a little bit. But. Positive news at least.
All right.
Nothing on the expanded part much or FedEx?
Not one word, actually, since they came here.
That's interesting, sounded like they were. Yeah. Something they wanted to do pretty quick, they maybe have things.
Yeah, I don't know all the details on the technical side, and I'll sound uninformed when I explain it, but. The state has had a lot of obligations on FedEx and and facilities of that size with the way they do their their treatment of all their. Their affluent, I I guess, or maybe it's water, and they have since changed all of that and now. Really up the ante on the the quality that the water needs to be at, and so they are planning significant upgrades to those systems on site. It's going to be hugely expensive, so we've had some meetings there, I think T A also has to do it. Um, I can't remember what they said it was going to cost, but it but it was going to be a huge. Uh, number, they they're bringing over Fuss, who obviously just did it all with lungs. Um, so they may be focusing on that, I'm not sure. Uh, but that was a big requirement, but they're trying to figure out how to satisfy, so it may just be they're focused on that, but. Um, haven't heard one word from them since they came before us.
I think happening on thirty two and seventy four, Bill French got property.
Gold what?
It used to be a gun shop.
Or way into foreclosure and the whole.
Oh, yes, yes. I did send them a cease and desist. Um.
Script unlimited.
And just, you know.
I just know.
Under common ownership.
Stuff had, like, it seemed to clear up and then stuff.
Yeah, so there was a. Prop, an original property owner sold it to a person who initially created the mess. That person, and the person who previously owned it held that held that mortgage. And so then he had to go through the foreclosure process, he foreclosed, and while he was in foreclosure. He did the cleaning up, because he was the prop, he was the one that. Was going to basically repossess the property and within his violation, we went, basically were. Had filed an order with the court. And then, uh. The property went to an auction and it was purchased by the person who owns the property next to them, they don't. And at that time, the property transitioned, our enforcement order went away because the owner left. And the person who had been working with the property had no owner of the property, so he stopped, so everything that was there stayed. And then the stuff from the other side came over. Um, so those vehicles are not new, they were just. Yeah, so so we, um, I did send him a cease and desist, when I talked to him and I basically said, you know, you gotta, you gotta get this taken care of. Um, and and he acknowledged that that he had been prioritizing other things, but that he would, he would. Do that. The building was hit. Uh.
Yeah.
And so he's still not been paid by the insurance company, so it's working on that, so he knows he's got.
Not exactly sure how the person been there.
I don't know, he sent me some photos of inside and outside, it's a little bit strange that how they did get into that.
Up, they up and over, it's really bush and, yeah.
A wall, is there a little stone?
Yeah, yeah.
It's old, there's there, yeah.
I don't know where they were coming from.
I, I don't think they knew where they were coming.
Well, maybe, maybe, so, yes, we have an active.
Okay.
Yeah. River Road and that little border there between that or towards the middle, the other bunch of stuff.
Apparently it's easier to trail towards than it is to break.
Yeah, yes.
Um, oh, another sore point, before it becomes really sore. How's the septic propane guy doing with his fence that isn't up yet? How's the septic propane guy doing with his fence that isn't up yet?
Admiral.
Yeah, I know that he had sent some of the details of the fence that he was um. Had ordered or was going to order, he sent, and you emailed those over to Chris, but I'm not sure where that stands, actually.
That's something.
Last time I went by, or a couple of times, I haven't seen any of the. I haven't seen any of the equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't seen any of that stuff there.
I thought you this was gonna be something that was.
Yeah.
Evidently in.
I don't even wanna go through that again.
No, but I, I, yeah, because I had looked to make sure that he didn't have any of that stuff on the property. Um, I don't know, I don't remember how that condition was worked, if it needed to be by specific time or if it needed to be prior to the vehicles coming on the property, but.
Oh, we cut a lot of trees behind the barn that's further down the road. You know, out of sight, and I think that's where most of the equipment migrated to.
The new stuff, the propane stuff?
The propane and the back hole and things like that.
Okay.
All right. It's eight twenty one P M, meeting adjourned. Goodbye, everyone.